To the body of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, all.
Morning.
A meeting to order in the Humble County for the General Church. So we'll have that motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
In a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Minutes from the eighth.
I'll accept motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second for the minutes for August eighth. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, general public concern. Through that.
Sure.
He's gonna be pretty public, yeah.
As long as you're nice about it.
Oh, yeah, I'm really nice about it. I gotta be nice, 'cause after sixteen months of doing his job. Alright, this is Kyle Whistle. He's gonna be our new Humboldt County Emergence Management Director, so. Let's bring him up here and introduce you to him, so.
Awesome.
Yep, and we got any questions for him or anything, or?
This is your first official week, Kyle?
Today's my first official day.
That's what I thought, man, that's what I thought.
Officially, yes.
Welcome aboard, yes, to anything, Dean.
Just a little background for those. Where, where are you from, where are you?
Um, I've been in the firing EMS world since nineteen ninety-two. Um, in Adele. I became a full-time paramedic at Dallas Academy. I then became a full-time firefighter, paramedic for the city of Urbank Hill. After retiring from the fire service, moved up here with my wife to her own farm in, uh, outside of Gilmore City. You remember where the tornado was? It went right by our house. Um, so, after retiring, I got into the world of training firefighters with online, uh, training programs. In the past from that, I also, uh, obtained my masters in disaster preparedness. So I kind of get really nicely into what I'm doing here.
Well, great.
Well, happy to have you.
Yes, good luck.
Thanks, sir.
Getting up to speed and reporting through everything. Dean will be, if nothing else, helpful. Yeah, and, and you've met a lot of members of the board, we interviewed Kyle, uh, on the EMA board, and, uh, yeah, he was, uh, by far and away. We're glad that he took the job. We look forward to him working with everybody.
I'm looking forward to serving every one of the people here. If you need anything, I'll leave you ahold of me.
I would just say that if you could get Trish, uh, or get on our email and send us an email so that we have a contact for you, so I might call Dean to find out what your number is, or.
Yep.
In the email chain, or at least able to trace you down.
Awesome.
Thank you very much, and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Bring your cell phone and office phone. Make sure you guys have it.
Just so you know, I'm still gonna call you. But I warned you about EMA stuff, alright?
Yeah, but, yeah, as far as EMA stuff, this is the man now, so.
We appreciate it.
Turn over the ring, so.
Dean, did you get that email I sent you? On how to quit?
Uh...
Down, mask, jumpsuit?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I gotta go down on Wednesday to pick up a bunch of that stuff, so. Yep, yeah, I got it done, so.
I figured I, figured you probably got the email too, but I forwarded it on to you.
Yep, yep, I got it. Yeah, I gotta work the, uh, state fair booth on Wednesday night, so I'll just come down on Wednesday to pick up that stuff and come back, so.
Got your Humboldt smile on.
I, I was there last night. Anyhow.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Kyle, good luck.
Thank you all. Fires, let me talk about fires quick. Oh, yeah, yes, you gotta be very careful with fires, because we had a, like you said, had a fire over by the, uh, golf course last night, or yesterday afternoon, and, uh, it appeared that it was probably a cigarette thrown out in the grass, and with everything being dry, it's gonna go fast, so just use extreme caution, you know, when you're doing that. Don't be throwing your cigarettes and stuff out on the road, so.
Well, I don't have the people that, in the country that burn, and the wind hasn't been blowing yet, but.
No, that's true.
We don't need it.
Right.
I hope we get a little rain tonight.
Yeah.
Or tomorrow. Like, all day tomorrow would be good, so.
Is she gonna have a burn ban? Um, that would be up to Emergence Management. Get hold of all the fire chiefs, and if they agree to it, then they get all the state fire marshal and.
Oh.
Remember, you did that last year, Ben, to.
What?
Your apartment, and they got out of.
That was dear. No, you don't need me on this. I think you have extreme caution.
Yeah.
Hopefully, I'll see you, so would you get a little rain?
Yeah. It would be nice, we need it. Alright.
Alright, thank you very much, Ken.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, is there Ben?
Have you?
Now that he, now that he threw you under the bus.
Yeah.
Really a good example of what maybe not to do.
What not to do, yes.
Don't do that.
Run a brush pile right now.
Good morning.
The first item that I've got on the agenda is to approve plans and specifications for the bridge replacement project on Lung Tree Road. This is the Lung Tree Arch, uh, towards the south end of the county. Yeah, it's basically down in the valley, there.
When is this, uh, gonna get done?
So I'm setting the wedding date for November through the DOT, uh, with anticipated construction next summer. They will have the ability for re-planting work if they want to move in and start removal. Uh, this is kind of the way the DOT has done it, but, yeah.
So the bids and everything done by the end of the year?
Yeah, so the bids will be done on the fifteenth of November. Of November.
Yeah, so.
So there's the, I'm, I'm thinking I know where this is at. This, they'll remove a bridge and then we're putting another, a pipe in there?
No, there's an arch that, right now, there's, there's a early nineteen hundreds, uh, concrete and brick arch.
Okay.
There, right now, we'll be replacing it with a pre-tensioned, pre-cast concrete beam bridge.
Okay.
Uh, it'll be a hundred and ten.
Right backwards.
It's a hundred and ten foot, uh, single span, thirty foot wide, will sit in line up for bad traffic to get through there.
And that would be tend, tentatively, I guess, depend on weather, how long would something like that take to?
They'll probably get some hundred and seventy-five to ninety working days for it.
Alright.
Well, everything looks to be in order.
Yeah.
Anything else, really, other than that's reasonable?
The clearing cost estimates are around seven hundred thousand. So it'd be used with, uh, bridge replacement money from the DOT.
Is this one of the projects, while looking back, that's just planned?
On a five-year. This is on the five-year plan. I was trying to get this thing let last December, and we ran into the.
Didn't do the.
We had to go into a historic bridge.
That was the one?
And.
That must have passed.
We were waiting for, uh, Army Corps clearances.
So that, that all went through?
Yep, everything.
Okay, so it actually got delayed out here, essentially, almost?
Almost, yep.
Okay. Well, with that, and everything else being good, I'll make the motion to accept the plans and specifications for the project, uh, on the bridge, on the Lung Tree Road.
We have a motion in a second for approval of the plans and specifications for the Lung Tree Bridge Project with the November fifteenth wedding. Each other's discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
The next item that I've got is to accept and place on file the Humboldt County Fiscal Year twenty twenty-two official report of the county highway engineer.
Let's be official.
This is our annual report that we have to submit to the DOT for approval, uh, that we got by September fifteenth. I usually don't like waiting that long.
Good. Stay up nights putting this together, or?
Uh, yeah, there's a few hours involved.
Wow.
So then, Ben, this is the one where talking about the five-year plan, we can adjust if something happens, if something were to change, that we needed to move a bridge, or something from four years to six years?
So that would be amending the, the five-year program. This is, uh, the financials for everything that we spent last year. It shows like sheet, the sheet two shows you what we received for income, uh, what our expenditure for it, it's got it broken down by DOT categories. You've got, uh, our total obligations out there, that's like the equipment that we've signed contracts with for purchasing, uh, contracts for contractors doing construction that haven't shown up yet. Um, so then you get down towards the bottom and you see what our unobligated balances, uh, and that dollar value of the four point six, that's money set aside for, uh, potential construction projects that might pop up, uh, if we get more bridge to go through, and we're required to have a thirty percent match, or something like that, when you're talking, a couple million is a thirty percent match, because that's probably a five million dollar bridge budget.
Now, don't make her blood pressure drop this early in the morning.
I'm just saying, no, we've got insurance to cover it, yes, right.
Yeah, because you ought to be careful what you wish for, you're applying for a grant, and if it comes through, that's not all of it.
Right.
That's part of it. Okay, you have the money if it were.
If, if we get additional funding from the state or the mayor's.
Program?
Yeah, we have county money to be able to match it.
Yep.
With all the infrastructure built, do you think there's a good possibility of that?
I hope so. Uh, applications will be by September fifteenth, so.
From, I think it was last week's discussion, we've got everything good to go for the applications.
Um, Chuck Britson is working on the final report for the need for plans and everything that they've been working on, uh, the three individual design layouts for Ironhead. I had a Teams meeting with them last Tuesday. Uh, they did have some questions on the wetland credits that we purchased as part of, I think it was DD two, um, so I didn't know if Trish would know that, or if I need to reach out to the brick hopper, James Westergaard, uh, just the details of it, how many acres you're talking, is it a dollar amount, or is it a number of acres purchased? It's area only. Actually, yeah, we can get that information and send it on to them, so.
Well, the gist of that is, there's wetlands involved in this?
There will be, yeah.
You could buy those.
You'll have to.
From, you can buy those from DD two.
Yeah.
Because they're sitting there.
Right, and then you rent the revenue.
That would be awesome.
For it.
Yep, because that was the malfunction, but, so. So that stuff will be, no one finished up in the submission by the deadline, if that was the thing.
If.
Uh...
Not, but, but the, everything else that you need, so we don't miss opportunity to potentially get the money.
Yep.
If that thing did go through and this is, you know, is that bridge a historical bridge, like the Burke murder, or would we leave that set there? I mean, how do you, how would you handle that? Put it off and let them fish off it?
Start firing it? We're gonna have more holes than you want.
No, uh...
I didn't know if that was the historical bridge, like Burke murder.
We would leave it in place while we're doing construction as a way to get from one side to the other. But then, I guess, the reality for me would be that removal would be considered part of that contract.
That's what I wondered. And I know it's a big if, we haven't got anywhere near the, putting the thing in.
No, I mean, right now, the, the ninety-nine counties are trying to put together the application sent in to the feds, or at which point, feds have time to decide. If we do get awarded, then the ninety-nine counties will all start bidding to.
Be a good.
Yeah, money, yeah.
Well, I guess we're at least moving forward on trying to get our ducks in a row, because last year that was what was.
Well, get like that next, right. Not having the clearances is what held us up.
Right.
Well, getting back to your official report, you did such a fine job of compiling. Anything else to bring to our attention? Well, then, I would make a motion that we accept and place on file the Humboldt County Fiscal Year twenty twenty-two official report of the county highway engineer.
I'll say.
We have a motion in a second to accept and place on file Ben's report. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and thank you for.
Thanks, Ben. Forty. They're doing what to you? Keeping, keeping the DOT happy.
Yeah. Uh, next item that I've got on the agenda is to approve applications for working the county right-of-way for Joe Wilson at eighteen forty-eight, Two Hundred and Seventieth Street. Uh, Joe's got a flood tile on his property that he thinks might get close to the edge of the right-of-way, and he just wants to cover his bases if he does have to dig into the back of the right-of-way. I explained everything to him as far as the location and locate, um, because we probably have a phone line running in the back of that edge, if not fiber option.
Just wanted to make note that it's very nice that people that are seeing the potential of their tile as they're facing it now, that they get the permit, and that you talk to them.
Beforehand, yep.
Yes, beforehand, because too often, they all of a sudden are working on tile and they realize they're in the right-of-way, and, you know, no permit, no locates, so that's just the way to do it, and then you can, yeah, sure look for your tile problems, but not have any problems doing so.
So scrambling, trying to figure out how you.
I've had people say, oh, what do we need to do? I said, well, this is what you should have done before you got here, but, you know.
Then he's provide us a copy of his, uh, homeowners insurance.
Everything is in order.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Talking to Ben?
We have a motion in a second to approve a working right-of-way for Joe Wilson at eighteen forty-eight, Two Hundred and Seventieth Street. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
That'll be awful hot. Uh, the next item that I've got on the agenda is to approve an application for working the county's right-of-way for McPeet trenching, uh, on behalf of Corn Belt Cooperative. They are intending on putting a two-inch conduit in the back slope on Two Hundred and Sixtieth Street, just east of the Badger Blacktop. They need a lot of easy source put in, here a while back, those large power poles. They're planning on running fiber between two of those poles, and they wanna run through conduit, so McPeet's been put in charge of placing the conduit for fiber to eventually go in.
So do they, do they have to get clearance from, from that other company that, to go through there, or what? Or still, it's still ours, right?
It's still ours, as far as the right-of-way, the poles are just outside of the right-of-way.
Alright, that's where I wondered.
But they're, they basically put up to the edge of our right-of-way, so their boxes will end up going on the poles, right on the right-of-way line.
But everything else with the order?
Everything else in order. Uh, they're supposed to be sending me a copy, an updated copy of their insurance, uh, the one that we got is recently expired, so.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion in a second to approve a working right-of-way for McPeet on Two Hundred and Seventieth Street, Ben? This is two seventy on the.
Uh, two sixty.
Two sixty.
Two sixty, yeah, it's two sixty, sorry.
That's alright.
I had it wrong on the agenda.
Any other discussion?
Here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
The next item that I've got on the agenda is to discuss possibly act on Roger Myers' driveway and dirt. Um, met with Roger last Tuesday, what'd I say?
Thursday, maybe?
Was it Thursday?
I don't know when it was.
Okay. Uh, met with Roger on the ninth, whichever day that was. Uh, we looked at multiple things out there, um, the one location, uh, he had stated that he had two eighteen-inch pipes, the word that Tom and them had stated that they removed two fifteens, uh, either way, we replaced it with one twenty-four inch culvert. Um, as far as the amount of area of drainage, uh, two fifteens is three hundred and fifty-three square inches, a twenty-four is almost thirty percent larger at four hundred and fifty-two square inches, but he did have two eighteens, uh, instead of fifteens, we would be just slightly smaller than what he had there before. Uh, Roger would like an additional pipe put in, but being the cost of materials now and what, uh, additional pipe costs, I figured I would bring it to the board for action. I know Bruce has met out there with Roger as well. That's as far as the pipe goes, uh, the dirt. So we cleaned out the east ditch from the bridge north to the intersection and removed about a half a load of sod, dirt material. Uh, prior to that, I told Roger that he could have it, but when we were out there, we saw that he had all grass area, so we'd peel off this grass, like casting it out in the field. He would like that half a load of dirt. While I was cleaning this end for the driveway pipe, I figured we'd talk about the dirt too, so. And Roger's here, pointing you on, so, Roger?
Well, this is like what you said, I had this, two of them before, we dilated it now, the cement went mad, and they took out the one I bought, put their, had two of them in, and, uh, that was a lot better, and it was, all we, all we needed was that, like Ben says, another tin cube on there, and it would be fine again, and, you know, it handled a lot of them. Then I got this here, two, uh, I got a rock on the seaside, uh, southeast side of the bridge. You guys wanna look at the picture here, you can. I, my post got so bad, you see here, that, uh, uh, it corroded back so bad that I had to run a lot of rock out into the cowl, as you can see here, uh, and I needed about three ton of rock to keep that, and we wrote it, it's already eroded, as you can see, and I lost probably a ton or two here, because the time I got it up to halfway in the post way, it's out in the ditch, you know, as you can see. So I needed about three ton of rock, but the longer you're there, it wouldn't take much, just coming in there and pushing down with the bucket, that's about it.
Is there that much coefficient of difference between what was there and what we put in?
As, as far as drainage area, it's, it's similar. Uh, I mean, I know I talked to Roger out there on site, um, and it hasn't been proved that the twenty-four won't handle it. My opinion would be, if the twenty-four doesn't handle it, we'll come back and put a second pipe in at that point. Because I think the twenty-four will handle any rain that comes off of, uh, the Lung Farm.
Is this a driveway pipe?
This is a driveway pipe.
This is underneath a field drive?
It's underneath a field driveway.
I.
The reason there was two pipes put in in the past is because the amount of water that would come out of Lung's Farm to the road.
Pipe underneath it?
And run through, the single pipe wouldn't handle it back in the day. Uh, so we installed a second pipe at some point, I don't know when, um.
This is pre-Ben?
Yeah. Two years ago, the concrete pipe was non-reinforced and collapsing and failing in the driveway, so the county went out, took both pipes out, and put in a twenty-four inch at their expense, uh, because we maintain the driveways after they're installed.
Right.
So we removed both pipes and we put in a twenty-four at that time.
With a twenty-four inch steel pipe?
Twenty-four inch steel pipe.
I would jump ahead and back and agree with your assessment, there is a brand-new twenty-four inch steel culvert pipe underneath the driveway. If it is an issue, you would remedy it.
If, if it does, if, if the twenty-four inch doesn't handle it, we'd come back in and put it what they did.
Historically, there was a smaller pipe, they added another one, and we can do something similar, if we had to change it, but.
So if doing that, Ben, could you write up some type of verbal? That we, Roger signs it, and if it's Roger, that if we end up with rain, that this thing doesn't, we can come back and put, what would we put in, a twelve, a fifteen, an eighteen?
Probably put in a fifteen next to it, which would be more than what was there previous to the two eighteens.
And that way, at least you have proof that we've agreed?
That, that one that goes in the fence, and that, that one, I'm trying to.
Well, we.
Prevent that.
I understand that.
If, if it plugs or fails, it's not gonna go towards your fence, it's gonna run to the road.
But it goes to the fence, I've had that happen before. They don't loosen it up, now that's the problem, is damage the fence, they can lose, all the trash and stuff comes down there, and if you got two of them there, that makes it two a lot better, quicker. It puts a problem of getting in the fence on, it, it, the fence is lower than the road, as you can see, it goes that way. So to put that fifteen in there now, it'd be a lot better, I think, prevent the damage over at the problem down the road.
Well, the note here said something about, uh, claiming eighteen-inch pipes, as, uh, there's something about fifteen-inch pipes, so does anybody really know what was taken out of there?
Tom and Kevin removed it, and said it's fifteen, Roger swears they were eighteen. I don't think we, we didn't save.
Right, so I mean, and your, your engineering calculations, the twenty-four inch pipe that is installed there right now is bigger than two fifteen-inch pipes?
It should be tougher to plug, being that it's a larger opening than.
Correct.
Right, that's what doesn't make sense with me, because this is twenty-four, twenty-four is definitely bigger, either whether fifteen or eighteen.
Right, it's just that it's one pipe versus two.
No, I, I just can't see doing anything right now, I think Ben's idea is correct, in loose, right in agreement, that if, uh, twenty-four inch pipe doesn't handle it, yes, you will add an additional pipe, but the chances, you don't know, but chances are it will handle it, is your assessment, would you say, Ben? It's big enough?
And I'm not opposed to hauling a half load of dirt to remedy that you dumped the dirt, that we, when we clean the ditch, uh, I guess I would just need to know where you want that half load delivered, Roger?
Well, about the other, well, the other side there is, and I don't have any problems when we clean out our, we've had this argument numerous times about, we swing it into their field or pasture, or, but on the day that it's done, I think we need to figure out, you know, if Roger was gonna mow that hay the following week, then we just suggest our cleaning by a week, so that we don't have to bring it back, or we don't have to, we're the ones that have money invested in it now, we hauled it away, now we're gonna reload it and bring it back at our expense, so.
Part of the reason that we hauled it away was because it was just sod.
Right.
And.
It wasn't dirt, it was just sod.
It was, it was sod, and the thought of pitching and casting over this fence.
Then we'd have impaired med, because we killed all of the.
We, we either killed the grass, or we nicked his fence by swinging over the fence, and then we'd be here for a damaged fence.
Right, I'd like to say that, I think that's very generous of you, to haul a half load of dirt, just to remedy, I think that's more than, more than generous.
Just had you put a flag out where.
Where you're wanting it.
I haven't done it all.
Yep, I haven't, that's very generous.
Bring it back, and, and I think in the future, we just. Bring it back and, and I think in the future, we just, you know, when someone calls or we decide we're going to clean this, whether it's in corn, beans, or hay ground, we just.
This is what we've got in agreement that the homeowner or the landowner signs.
Yeah.
That states that we'll cast it out in the field, but we're not responsible if.
We had rock, we had.
Or a broken fence post or woven wire ends up out there. And obviously, if we see it, we're going to grab it, but.
Right.
More or less, it's a whole monument for us.
I agree.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I agree too.
So if we bring back a half load, then he'll put a flag where he wants it and that way we don't have to go back out and reload it to move it a feet over.
Okay.
By that southeast corner of the bridge.
Well, you just put a flag where it needs to be because it's, that way the responsibility is on you on where you want it and it's not on our guys. Because we're not going to tell them to pick it up and load it.
He wants.
Rock in the southeast corner of the bridge.
Oh, yeah.
Is that even, have they moved that?
The county, that feels like a drain.
Then I had, it caused me, I had another two rock on the county. Because, and you ruined else one.
We had a rock here as long as the county.
Need some rock there.
This is the ditch I live in.
I don't know what.
Which, it's the lack of rock.
Yeah, I, I was out there. It's on the, probably, well, it's on both sides, I would say.
Right.
Where the water comes from the west, it's working on that.
Hey, I don't know if I can.
Area.
Riprap to stop water. No.
No.
Looks nice, but it doesn't have the ability to prevent.
It needs to be different stone to hold the.
Yep.
In place.
I said, I don't want to, we can, we can put a couple of ton on the south side. I don't want to stick much money into it because I'm tearing that bridge out in three years.
A couple of years, yeah.
So.
Do we have any?
Do we have any?
Uh, I mean, what would you put, like six, seven inch ballast in there or?
Get a lot and get a little riprap. Uh, thirty bucks a ton. So we're only talking a hundred bucks plus our time.
Yeah.
You don't move the rock there and I put the new bridge on anyway around the end.
Yeah.
So it's not, nothing's going to be, you know, preventing.
More, I mean, it's more difficult, difficult to try and dig it out and salvage it.
Right. We need to stack it up in the field.
What's that? I knew you'd hear that, Roger.
Uh, are you in agreement to do that? Because otherwise, this guy knows my number, he can call me every day.
Avoid putting the additional pipe in for the time being.
That's my feelings, I just.
I don't think there's a reason to do that, we need it.
Yeah. I hope, yeah.
I just, if you would write up something that we've agreed, if, in the future, if we have water that's backed up, we can pull it, put another fifteen or put a, whatever size you're going to put in there and match in that twenty-four. Have him sign it, you sign it, it's in the, that area is.
I, I guess that's what I'll, I'll ask this work order and get a copy of it, send off to Roger and a copy that you guys have.
That'd be great. Is that agreed?
Yeah. I get it, so. It depends on telling that.
I know, I, I guarantee you, I'm pretty sure you'll tell him.
You still get up there?
Yep. Well, right now, um, we're all praying that we get some water that hides that we've come into that fence, so. All right. Now we need to move to your discussion on the phone for secondary roads.
So this is, uh, cooperative meeting that we had with Chris, uh, in the IT department who's worked in order uh, in agreement with Verizon for purchasing the cell phone, or cell phone plan. Um, he got some pricing for us as well. And what I wanted to bring up to you was the possibility of county issued cell phones for my three foremen, uh, myself and Dave. Uh, these are numbers that would be, that would be given out to contractors. Uh, in the event that my foreman would be on vacation that weekend. It would be the, that he would pass it down to the next in line. So that when law enforcement is trying to call about a tree down or whatever, they just call that phone number and.
Would be their contact.
That would be their contact. I like the idea of it for the foremen. I don't necessarily need a county issued cell phone, but.
Does he necessarily need one?
He's been using his personal one right now.
I mean, how, how many calls does he get? You get a lot more and most of them are from us.
Yeah.
I do agree with probably the foreman. Could you, is your theory that the foreman's not going to be on call or around, so give it.
He'll pass it on.
And so here, you to, whoever's out of that shop, you're going to be out, yep. And if, like I said, a stop sign gets run over or something, they've got a direct contact.
Right. As, as it is right now, uh, law enforcement calls my phone.
Then you've got to track somebody down.
And then I try and track somebody down.
So does that mean we have a schedule for each shop? The bill is on call that the stop sign gets run over this weekend or next weekend? Is that how you do that, Ben?
Not.
No, you just call Ben.
Some people buy areas. Um, and then depending on the call, what if it.
Needs.
Uh, what was it? Last week, uh, was that Sunday? Not yesterday, but Sunday before, we got a decent amount of rain. Two of them's coming down, law enforcement called the, uh, I don't know, about eight o'clock Sunday night. Um, I ran out, we thought the owner had already had it removed, that is the time I got that. So we didn't end up needing to call anybody in for that, but.
All right. I think that the three, I'd be phone for each shop, for the shop foreman, makes a lot of sense. And everybody's got a contact and it would get, if something did happen, it would be a lot quicker. You know, if a sign is broke or a tree's laying in the road, because otherwise they're going to probably call you. You're going to try to sort through, who am I going to get ahold of? They can call directly and like you said, the foreman's not available. This guy is designated for that time period. This area, call his number, that's part of the responsibility.
I think you're on the right.
I think that the, once each foreman, Ben and Dave, I don't really think need a cell phone issued.
I use my personal one right now.
Yep.
Does he want to continue to have your cell phone out there, your personal one?
Well, otherwise you're going to.
I'm not, I'm here to, it's, it's not like I'm getting an abundance of phone calls from private citizens where it's on my personal phone.
Okay.
That's not happening yet, so I'm not really worried about it.
So has Chris put a package together or he's searching?
Uh, he's tentatively got a package put together.
Okay.
Um, it's forty, fifty bucks a month for a line. Would it be easier or cheaper, better, instead of carrying two cell phones to have pager? Pager, like a pager and say, you know.
I think we're going backwards in technology.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I mean, just as far as. I don't want to carry two cell phones, okay?
Right.
No, but this is.
People that have two cell phones, you think they must really be busy.
But you, wait, just to the foreman.
Well, I wouldn't want to carry two, I don't have time to carry one.
The, the other option is, is you just give the foreman a bit of a stipend for using their, for using their cell phone.
I, I like that better, but.
Yeah.
How I would like to do a monthly installment of, you get X amount of dollars.
But do the foremen want to put out their, their cell phone number? You've got to think of that too. Everybody's going to want to put out their self, personal cell phone number out to the public.
I understand that.
What do you think about that?
Uh.
The foreman take about all this?
That's what I need, I need that foreman meeting.
I think it just, I, you could ask them, but I just think it's, if it's a work-related, if it's a work-related cell phone, they know it's work-related and.
I'd just visit with them, see what their feelings are. If, we can come up with, uh, an amount that we could pay per month for that service of using their phone. If they don't want their number out, I guess we don't have any other choice. Because we know that it is difficult to try, even in today's day and age, you still have issues reaching out to people if they don't want to be caught.
Right.
Or found. So you have your foreman meeting, see where you, where they want to be and then we'll come back.
I'll make the motion to table.
Okay.
We have a motion, we have a table, the phone's issue. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both say so, honey?
Uh, the next item that I've got on the agenda is to discuss act on intersection light, C twenty and C thirty. Eric brought this up to me two weeks ago, I believe. There is an intersection, uh, light and pole in the south, southeast corner of the intersection. Um, this would be the boat over to Blacktop where it matches into, uh, Blacktop just north of boat. Right there in the.
There's a station.
Yeah. Right now, it's about eight feet off the edge of the road. Uh, it is Mid-American line. I spoke with Mid-American last week. They don't even make those arms, well, the long arm that's out there right now, they don't even make those anymore. Uh, he said he could possibly move it back as much as five feet, but that's as far back as he can go.
That would make a huge difference.
Okay.
Five feet would make a huge difference.
Is it, I, I'm unfamiliar with what.
We've got a.
Right.
No, it was close because the.
All the turn.
Yeah, remember, those boats are on a curve. And so when, and a huge amount of grain is hauled by semis now. And when there's any kind of traffic at that intersection, so it could be a car stop at the stop sign and there could be a truck coming from the south, the, the guys driving trucks say essentially almost got to stop and wait even though they're not required to.
On that.
On C twenty. Because if there's something in the north lane, they don't have room to pull far enough. If they try to just miss the car and turn, their trailer's most likely going to get that pole. So five foot would make a huge difference. And that's the same area that you always have to keep an eye on, which is essentially edge rutting. But because so much traffic ends up just off the edge of the road, sometimes it creates a limit. But the county guys, as long as they're keeping an eye on it, they keep probably in it.
I mean, we're not talking about adding materials to this.
They can move older, they could move it.
We're just talking about moving, moving the pole.
Yeah, because right now, it's right against the, I guess, the slope of the, you know, shoulder. If you, if they could, so they could move it back five feet, that'd make a huge difference.
Well, if they can move it fine and make it work, I guess that's.
I'll ask them.
Check it out.
They would move it, as I told you, I think that's great. I would, do we need an action on that?
Not really, I just wanted to bring it up. Um, I guess we can have that discussion.
Perfect. I think that would be a good safety deal, be better than getting a call from a truck driver, farmer and says, well, your pole is laying in the ditch.
All right. And we also didn't handful of signatures, the way it looks.
I think that was the main thing that I have.
Couple of other things that we'd visit about, uh, road related. And this is, uh, on, uh, we would all call it K road. And C twenty-six, which people will call the Broadgate Hardy Blacktop, it's actually one hundred and seventieth street. Uh, there is no stop stopping on County K, but there is each direction, east and west. But it's been, historically, there has been some accidents there. Uh, people really noticed it this year. It's a troupe of crop location. Every intersection has corn this year. Uh, it's not quite as bad as on rattle roads when there's corn on every intersection that you cannot see and it's very dangerous. But, uh, I mentioned to Ben, the possibility of maybe, um, solar powered flashing light at the top of the stop sign of the east-west traffic, uh, to call attention. Because, uh, people that drive and a lot of people do on County K, you will see quite often people do not stop at that stop sign coming from the east or from the west. And it's extremely dangerous because people are running at speed and what speed? All of the speed women on County K, just the possibility, and Ben said he could look into that, but want to, you know, get in front of us. I, I see it as a safety feature, better to prevent another accident. And I know it says cross traffic does not stop, there is lumber strips, more east and west traffic. But people just felt, I've seen it, I have a lot of people that say, man, can we do something to improve the safety at that intersection? Maybe a flashing beacon on top of the stop sign, which there is a few around.
So the ones that are around were purchased with, uh, a piece of money in transportation safety improvement. Um, and that was due to the high number of accidents, the frequency of accidents and the spirit of some accidents. Uh, this intersection wouldn't have qualified, uh, while there's probably been multiple close calls. There's only three accidents listed in the last nine years, I think, on their crash analysis tool. Um, and, and no severe ones. So these would be purchased out of secondary roads, signed budget at two thousand dollars a piece.
So that what it costs to put a blinking, a blinking light above the.
Yeah, blink light above.
Solar powered blinking light.
What we paid was, I want to say days, that was just under two thousand dollars a piece.
I went right.
Now, maybe they've gone, gone down a little bit, but I haven't reached out to the pricing yet.
Well, Mike, so I suppose, uh, is it better to wait until you get a statistic and then it'll get paid for because somebody got killed there? Or is it better to be proactive and have an extra safety precaution so that no one gets killed there?
Well, I, I agree with Eric and I guess, but my feelings are is, is that the most dangerous corner we have? I'd like to know if we've got four or five that we would qualify in that category. Maybe we need to start figuring out how we put five hundred dollars a year away so that we can try to put all those corners with blinking lights.
There's some danger of a center.
There is, and the corn, um, this time of year is not.
Really, if you go there, it, it isn't, you know, as long as you pay, you know, follow the traffic laws and stop, it, you know, when it's supposed to, you, it's fine. But you, the people that tend to not stop aren't going to be able to see as well because of the corn.
Right.
Each intersection and think, oh, there's nothing coming up this coast across here.
To, to me, the, the next location would be between Road and Livermore where it meets one sixty-nine. But those on our side, they may pay those.
Those are D O T. Yeah. Absolutely, that's not.
It is, that's a very good understanding.
And they do that, and you don't understand, like, people that travel road, I mean, anywhere. I mean, uh, it's just, I hate to see, uh, well, you put us in, there's a lot more distracted driving going on right now.
Oh, yeah.
I think you're familiar with that.
That corners.
I, I will say it is better.
It, yes. And I think that might be a place to start and I might.
Go around and start checking on the pricing.
I would. I mean, at least give us the numbers that, because God forbid you'd ever say, well, it was eighteen hundred dollars and then we say somebody gets, has an accident, eighteen hundred is a pretty cheap, and I'm just using that number.
Yeah. Let's hope it's less than two, that's, but everything's expensive. But then what's the, you know, price of, you know, avoiding? And like I said, distracted driving, that does call, I've seen, if anybody has driven, Bruce probably, trucking and stuff, some of the smaller towns have stop signs in their towns. And maybe they got some money, maybe they just put it on their own budget. They put flashing stop signs, they put the flashers around the stop sign to get people to stop so that, and essentially in those towns, it's to slow people down, which is another thing. And I know we have the discussion.
Boats got them, I don't know if they're hooked up solar or. Cities have the easier ability.
They have, they have, yeah, service. But they have, have those stops, I'm just using boats as an example, let you see those. They had the stop signs for many years and then they added the green around the stop signs, the flashing lights.
Is the Velvet Hill, is that powered or is it solar?
Uh, the top is solar, yeah.
I just look into it, let's see what we can come up with. I, I agree on.
I think, better to be proactive than say, oh, foreman got killed there and we're going to spend it for the stop sign. Well, that's great.
No, I, I was just saying that it was not eligible for the program because there was only three. I, I wasn't, I wasn't saying that.
No, you weren't, you weren't, no, I'm just using that as an example, we're not, you weren't, you just said.
Look at that story.
I want, I want that clarified.
Please let this press know engineer extremely safety conscious.
All right, Ben, discussion on your action for the handbook bottom.
So, we met, uh, I want to say we met about a month ago, uh, department heads that were available. Uh, we went through the latest iteration of the employee handbook and discussed any possible changes beyond that. There was only a few comments, but the gist of it was what's there and in writing is good.
You don't see any, sorry.
Any additional changes beyond what we've made.
And Mike will go through it and everything.
So talking to Mike, he said the next step is for the board to approve the red line copy. And then they'll make an official table of contents, cover sheets and everything for us to formally adopt beyond that.
And then that will be something that comes up.
Yeah, and.
There are ways. You can get one done.
Decision to publish, doc. Then they'll apply something if they want change.
Something, something is saying come up, yeah, yeah. There, yeah.
You can't, you can't write a policy.
They need to be reviewed every year.
Yeah, you can't write a policy, that's going to cover every single instance.
Yeah, yeah.
But at least where you're at right now, it was reviewed and you didn't see anything, so we can move forward with it.
Yes.
Good deal.
And we're meeting.
So I think that you have to officially.
Right, but you have, we have a schedule for what, is it next week or the following, the thirtieth is when we're meeting?
That's a safety, that's safety.
Oh, question, Ben, can you put it on the agenda for next week and approve the handbook?
To approve.
If we get the handbook back.
Oh, so now that, yeah.
So we don't have to do the official, we just have to approve, we just have to approve the red line. So that doesn't have to be an official action, I assume.
The red line?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'll just put it in the minutes, it was. You would make a motion on it?
I'll make a motion to approve the red line.
Thank you.
I'm gonna do that back. Yeah, there you go, I thought it had to come back, back at that, absolutely.
We have a motion and a circuit to approve the red line of the Humboldt County Employee Handbook. And at this time, I guess, any other discussion, all in favor, I?
All right.
I.
Post same sign, if carried.
Thirty will be the safety. So, and I'll have that available.
So between the book that you handed out here for your five year.
Annual report.
Our paperman increased.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
Down.
Yeah.
In a second.
Anything else? How are you doing mowing, did we get our mower back, or you?
We got the mower still running, um, boat's finished up their gravels. Um, we're about to the point where we're going to start running Blacktops again because we started running before Labor Day.
You're talking mowing?
Mowing, yeah, mowing, yeah. Uh, Friday, Ben, looks like he's going to be moving in next week, at least to unload the boxes, and then he'll come back.
I have something that, uh, keeps cropping up on me, and we've talked about it. And I know that you had some training on shoulder slash ditch reclamation with blades, graders. Have they still been experimenting with that on a couple of our roads?
Yeah.
And still fielding complaints about that. And I've tried to explain nicely that it's kind of a work in progress. And it's on Nevada, maybe at whichever you prefer, and, and Birch. And it's, it is perims, there are, there are no snow in the low road, there are low traffic count roads. But they apparently are still experimenting and they do bring the dirt slash rock up on the road, trying to work with it. And it does, it does create a, a rough surface. And of course, the few people that happen to maybe drive in those areas are the ones that are saying, what are they doing? And I said, well, it's a work in progress, they need to practice doing it, but it's, it makes it pretty rough, so. I, I don't know what else to say, and I've heard from, you know, of course, a lot of the guys went through that training. Did you have another one scheduled coming?
Another one scheduled beginning of October, and that's going to be pulling everything out of the ditch up onto the road.
And I've heard from, you know, the greater guys and shop for them and that have gone through the training, don't not let us do that because they see some real benefit to that. And some real cost savings, and it's, so they're creating some issues on some of these low use roads while they're experimenting on it.
And they need a, they need a good rain on them.
Yeah.
And when we get the rain on them, it's going to get muddy.
That'll be the accident.
Get it firm up.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, one fifty-fifth was a clear example of that, um, that'd be out of some potholes road. Uh, we pulled a lot of material up onto that road, and we've been trying to rebuild it since, uh, contractor hauled dirt out of that road. They hauled a hundred and fifty side dump loads out of a farm and basically destroyed the road bed. And we've been trying to rebuild that over the past one, one and a half. And, uh, the plan is to put rock back onto it, but I want my guys to be done cutting four slopes before we put rock on top. I mean, ultimately, when you do this floating process, you're supposed to be doing it in the spring to pull the material in and then put fresh rock over the top of it. The guys are learning right now, so we're not doing it during the proper time, but we're honing our techniques on our lowest volume roads.
Yeah, and that's what I explained to the, you know, traveling public, um, but some of these roads will get their use with harvest. So they'd be at a point where things move on with some rock back over the top so that it won't create a, an issue getting down those, those areas.
Uh, here in Old. One fifty-fifth will be getting some rock, I don't know, rock of that on Birch, uh, having driven on, I'll check.
Kind of check into that, and I, I mean, once I kind of explained that this was a, you know, work in progress and a new way of, you know, road reclamation. Understandable of that, but it is one thing if you need to get down those roads, they bring up harvest coming up, it, it can be really rough. You know, they're not, they're not the maintenance level that they're used to, you know. So if you will check into that, be, I think everybody'd appreciate it.
We're, we're farming communities, so.
And they just said it ends up tearing up the roads when it comes to harvest, we're thinking about what we can rebuild. I think that's what their concern is at this point. So if you check those two spots, Nevada and Mata, whatever, and then south on Birch, and just see what's going on.
Okay.
I think that'll take care of it.
Well, on the gravel road out north, my place where the Blacktop ends, they have a farmer out there that uses, he has a scraper. So when the road gets rough, he just says, I'll go ahead and use it, try to fill them in. When he does it and he's used to doing it, it's pretty smooth. But when this old guy gets on that tractor, I can make a mess in a hurry. So I would just say that each guy is learning in it, get prepared, and they're nervous there. Because they got those same people that are driving by and they got to chirp and tell them that road really looks like, you know what?
Yep.
And so I'd just say, let them, we got, still got that young crew that is trying to learn.
Well, this is a new procedure entirely.
Something we haven't done.
And we actually have a lot of new blade operators.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not picking up for, but I'm not, we don't need to throw them under the bus.
No.
We'll figure out a way to make it work. We aren't leaving the country, we're going to keep working at it and hopefully it'll come around, so. Anything else, Ben? Awesome, well, thank you for all of it. Uh, looks like committee reports, you going to be up and.
On the date, um, I have, we had, um, director interviews for T cat daycare, and we've got another one coming up, so.
Interview or?
We had two interviews last Monday, and we got another one that we'll be doing. That's it, yeah, we hope.
Are we, are our numbers getting any better over there, or we?
Yeah, no, we're starting to.
So what we did with, um, what's his name?
Yeah, the, all this has helped, longevity and, um, keeping people.
And we're keeping kids, they still see on Facebook once in a while, somebody says, well, I'm looking for daycare. We have the ability for.
Yeah, we, but kind of what we're at right now is what they call ratio. So we're at ratio with kids and, um, employees. So if we get, um, say more kids or get a waitlist than we call there in the.
Fine, you're an employee or so.
Yeah, yeah, and that's kind of what they've been doing, they've been doing a good job, we've been hiring. Um, the daycare's been hiring quite a few, and things are going pretty good.
Awesome.
Yeah. That's all I got.
That's it?
That's it.
Uh, last Monday I went up to see John, he wasn't in, so I left the ordinance number five point eleven. Uh, this is from the sanitarium to, uh, inspect tanning facilities. Uh, Dave was the sanitarium, Pocahontas, he worked on this and, uh, didn't get it through. And now our other young man is working on it, and John gave his approval, so we will get that on the agenda for coming up so we can get readings on it, get it approved.
Get it approved so he can start doing according to the state.
He can, uh, inspect tanning facilities.
Now, wasn't, if my memory is not completely bad, there's also something with, was it tattooed?
Tattoos he's got through.
He's got through, right.
He respects that two partners, but the tanning.
Has to have.
Facilities, he can't inspect because we don't have an ordinance on it.
All right.
I've got Pocahontas ordinance here, and we went through and changed, uh, or he, he went through and changed all of Pocahontas County to Humboldt County. Same ordinance, uh, ordinance they have and the same one Buna Vista has.
Perfect.
And the place.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, it's been a busy week. Uh, Wednesday I went to the Humboldt County, um, housing meeting in the afternoon. And then Wednesday night I went out to the animal shelter. Trump's doing pretty good, um, we're picking up a few pearl caps and big mutter and then turning them back.
Interesting concept, I always thought.
Yeah, yeah. But, uh, most of them are in Humboldt, or all of them that we've been doing is in Humboldt, and almost getting back on the beast. And, uh, uh, fun for that, and Cole said they're just about out, so. Uh, Friday, I went to a six hour seminar on VA. Um, it was a region five district meeting. And we discussed all kinds of stuff, uh, on veterans. It was geared towards veterans, veterans affairs. And it was open to supervisors.
Yeah.
As a commissioner, I went to it, um, just to see what it was all about, being asked if I'd done. There was two of us from Humboldt County, we probably had thirty people in the road, thirty, forty. And, uh, they was all commissioners from other counties. Uh, we discussing getting kind of a genderized or a program for all counties to model. And, uh, stuff like that. Um, would the other supervisors be interested in going through something like that for a little training? So they understand where the veterans are and how to take care of them in your county? That was the question they asked. And there was two of us there that was supervisor. She told one guy, Jerry, I think his name was, from the suit, she, he said, probably says, I'm learning this, this is my first deal. She says, well, since we only have one supervisor in the room, and I held my hand up, and I said, let me tell you something. Second term supervisor. And, uh, also, I've been on the Veterans Affairs Commission for thirty-nine years, I went on in eighty-three. And that's it, so, so I've been around the block for kind of two, and I've been to a lot of the training and call schools. But, uh, you're training up to school and stuff. So, anyway, I don't know how far it got, but.
It's not her.
But I, I haven't been to the schools now for quite a while. Uh, they do have them in spring, they do have them to call for all commissioners and directors. And the one for the commissioners is a one day school, and well, that's when I went to, when I was supposed to be. So, so just, that's my thoughts on it.
My question to you, Dave, is for you to do that, and you have more background than, than any of us. But to send five of us there and we're starting fresh, I don't have a problem going and listening and trying to learn some of it. But by the same token, if the schools in, say, Des Moines, and we spend five, um, people down there mileage and whatever, um, are we any further ahead than you being down there and knowing? If we need a couple to go, I, I think we could do that.
I think this would be help out here in Des Moines, we again, in their room. Uh, because we're centrally located, you got.
Other counties can go.
You got county all the way around this, area five, I think we're district five, we're the, uh, there's five districts in the state. And they cover a lot of times, so.
And as far as learning, what the federal government's going to do, I don't know if we could ever keep enough notes because they can't, they change from, and especially with veterans. I, I would say that we're all way behind on that.
Uh, you can, uh, uh, if we put on, uh, for service officers more or less, we got a veteran service officer. Um, we talked about who hires, the supervisor is the one that does the approving. However, the, uh, commission is the one that does the hiring, and then it goes to supervisor, the recommendation to hire one. Where the money comes from, the allocation, um, I don't know what Dean is getting down there salary. But they talked about, uh, twenty to twenty-nine hour a week, uh, person like Dean, sitting in office director. It should be around twenty dollars an hour. Thirty to thirty-nine hours a week is about twenty-two, and over forty hours a week, forty or more, which is twenty-eight dollars an hour, that wages. So they said we should come back and look at their wages and stuff, so. Anyway, it was real interesting, I learned a lot, uh, I appreciate the people putting it on, they've done a happy job.
He was in that range.
Is he, I thought he was.
Yeah, he's in that range.
Well, and I guess for the most part, um, the next time you have that meeting scheduled, because I don't, I guess I didn't know that it was coming up. But I think if it's that close, I would figure out a way to, are they day, day meetings or late, late day or?
We started at nine o'clock out there and we got out of there at five or three.
Just had to put it, bring it.
Yeah.
When, did you, yeah, I mean, we, any of us could have known, but Dean wasn't able to attend, that sounds like something, he certainly is the administrator.
He will get it next month or in October. He will get it next month or in October at school.
Okay.
The same thing. I probably won't go to school again, but they have them, I think, in March. Then they have one mid summer that could be anywhere in the United States. And I think Dean went out to Ohio on one and was working on another one. Um, that's national school. And then they have the fall school that all the commissioners do, you know, they're not personally, see what they're doing. But like I say, it was very interesting, uh, being a veteran and seeing what is out there and what they could do, what they need to do and where your funding comes from. It was interesting for me, anyway.
Well, thank you.
Did they bring up that new thing that you got passed, the fire pit thing or the, isn't there something they just passed to the, um, yeah, thank you. I was trying to think of the, was it some kind of fire pit or something with smoke weakness, something like that, Ken?
Yeah, what they're working over there.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, right.
Did they talk about that or?
They talked about the-
They just passed, was it last week?
A little bit of PTSD and stuff like that, not too much on there. But we're getting younger veterans, uh, down here at the Dean's office and Legion Building. They go in there and they fill out papers and stuff and Dean helps them to get planes in and stuff. They did talk about them and we're getting a lot of these younger veterans that's coming back with PTSD. A lot, they share them, just coming back with some form of PTSD that's been on our , our, our, so. All right, that's, that's all I had.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, past Monday the eighth, I had a building families board retreat that was interesting, not educational. Uh, that was a part of it. And then that same evening on Monday the eighth, I did attend the Farm Bureau Appreciation Supper out at the River Valley Winery. Uh, and that was just, basically just the Farm Bureau Appreciation Supper, so. Ended that, uh, Tuesday morning, I had a Public Safety Commission meeting that morning. And that was all my official extracurricular stuff last week.
All right. I had none. Do you have anything else for us, Chris? All right.
Do you have a motion for adjourned?
Second?
No.
Unanimous.
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 I'm guessing that everybody, we eye then with both, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, we are adjourned at eight, nine forty-six, nine forty-four.